Good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of the City Council for August 10, 2015. If you would please stand and join us with Councilmember Miller, we will begin the pledge of allegiance.
Please try me in the pledge of allegiance to our great nation. The flag of our great nation. Have the pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the very public, for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mayor Deaton.
Here.
Mayor Potem Sloan.
Here.
Councilmember Miller.
Here.
Councilmember Masalavet.
Here.
Councilmember Vera Papa.
Here.
By motion of the City Council, this is the time to notify the public of any changes to the agenda and/or rearrange the order of the agenda. City Manager?
Mayor, if I could, I have a couple items under the City Manager Report tonight that I'd like to ask the Council to rearrange the order of the agenda so that I can call those up under Presentations. We have some junior lifeguard commendations from Assemblymember Travis Allen that we'd like to present to some very well-deserving junior lifeguards tonight, as well as I'd like our chief to highlight our very successful junior lifeguard program and some highlights for this summer, as well as former Councilman Mike Levitt's here tonight to give an update on Orange County Vector Control. So, those are the only two changes I'd like to add.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes?
I'd like to pull item E.
Okay. So, with that, do I have a motion to approve the agenda with the changes made? Please vote. That's five-zero, to approve the agenda as amended. Now, we will begin with Presentations and Recognitions, and City Manager Ingram?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. At this time, I'd like to call on our Marine Safety Chief, Joe Bailey.
Thank you, City Manager Ingram, Mayor and Council. I just wanted to take a minute tonight to talk about our junior lifeguard program that had our last day on the beach last Friday. We still have an overnight camping trip for the older kids going to Catalina next week, but most of the program's done, so I just wanted to talk about a few highlights from this year. We had 365 kids in the program, and these kids all had to pass the swim test to be in our program. So, we actually have one of the fastest swim tests in the area. It's about five seconds faster than Huntington and Newport, so we got some fast kids around town. All of our lifeguards, or all of our instructors or lifeguards have had to have worked on the beach for at least a year, so they're experienced lifeguards. And the kids participate in all sorts of fun activities, but also a lot of workouts. Everyone knows in our program about Two Mile Tuesday, and I'm sure parents hear about it, and we actually have a little less participation that day, less kids show up.
What happens?
People know about Two Mile Tuesday, but they swim around the pier more than once, that's for sure. We do one group swim at the beginning of the year, and then after that, they just go for it. They learn how to surf, body surf, bodyboard, first aid, all sorts of fun stuff like that. So, it's a great learning program. At the same time, we beat them up pretty good, so we send them home tired to their parents. That's the whole point. This year, we did some special events that I wanted to highlight. We have raging waters, which is a water park. We send the kids to Catalina for the day. Long Beach comes over, and we do a big competition with them. We had our banquet last Friday at Zoder Field. We served over 700 hamburgers, and Gary loves our junior lifeguard hamburgers. He wants to know what my special trick is, but I'm still not telling him. So, it was a great event, and then we have a blow-up screen, and we see a video compilation of the year's events. And always the favorite in that is the boat drops, where the kids roll off the back of the boat, simulating a rescue, and there's always a lot of interesting flops and splashes off the back end of the boat on the video, so that's always fun. But the reason I wanted to bring up the special events was because it just takes a large amount of planning to put those events together, to transport, to feed, to bring all the equipment for 365 kids is just a lot. And actually, Mike Diller, Mike is standing in the back there, he's our coordinator, and he's mostly responsible for all that planning this year and last year. He's done a great job with that. I mean, feeding all these kids on pizza day or Wild Rivers is quite the chore. And, you know, sometimes, if the untrained eye, if you look out on the beach, it might look like just complete mayhem, like 365 kids running around, but with careful planning and great supervision, the program's well-organized and a lot of fun. So, the last event I want to talk about is our Junior Lifeguard Regionals. This is an event we hosted for a couple of years, it was around five years ago, and this is a competition for junior lifeguards from throughout California. So, there's usually around 200, or 2,000 competitors, and there's usually 24 to 28 teams that show up. And we happen to have a group of winners, so I'm going to have these guys come up right now. Chris Howard, Jordan Sickler, River Danner, and Nathan Hartman, come on up. There's two other members of the team, Sidney Cooper and Casey Chamberlain, that couldn't make it tonight. So, these guys are in our A group, so that's ages 14, 15, 16, and 17, and actually, the A is 14 and 15. Double A is 16, or 17 and 18. Anyway, so these guys are the A group, and they won an event that's called the Run Relay, and it's a sprint where they run down around a cone and back, and then the next person goes, and the next person goes. And I tell you, this year, not only did we win, but we blew them out of the water. These guys are fast. So, it's really kind of a nice thing. We have our state legislature, Assemblymember Travis Allen from the 72nd District, send these guys a certificate of recognition, and so it's pretty nice. So, I wanted to make a big deal about it this year at the council meeting. These guys did a great job. Like I said, they killed them, and we won the event going away. So, proud of these guys to go and beat the rest of California, from our little town of Seal Beach, and congratulations, guys. So, once again, thanks for the time, and it was a great summer for us, and congratulations to these guys, and we'll hopefully see you guys next year. Thanks.
Thank you, Chief Bailey, for a great program. And now, we have our former mayor, Mike, to give us a vector report. You're going to tell us, no more mosquitoes?
Oh, no. Then we'd be out of a job. No. Good evening. You all know me, I'm city councilman until December, and now I am still your representative as a trustee to the Orange County new name, Orange County Mosquito and Vector Control District. That'll be all on our new logos everywhere. I want to talk tonight very briefly about a new direction that Orange County Vector is taking against one of its oldest enemies, and then talk for just a second about what we're doing to help all of you to fight against West Nile virus. Now, up until recently, if you're out on your patio and see a rat running across the back fence, or he's up on your roof, or she's up on your roof, or if you're lying in bed at night and you start hearing little footsteps up there above your bed in your attic, you've got a rat, or a lot of rats. First thing you do is you call Orange County Vector, and you say, "I need someone to come out here with a bait station, a lot of bait, and let's kill off the rats." And that's what we did at one time. We sent out our inspectors, they came out, they put a little black station over there, put fresh bait in it, warned you not to leave stuff laying on the floor, and then they left. Over the years, we found out that that isn't working. Eighty percent of the calls for bait stations came from 20% of the people. The same people over and over and over again. Baiting rats isn't working. At the same time, the government came out and said, the federal government said, "You have to stop putting bait out there in the first place," but you're finding out that we're getting secondary poisoning. The rats die, and the birds swoop in, eat the rats, or... Dr. Did, you have a coyote that might eat the rat and die, we don't want that either. Dogs come by, and so we learned from the federal government, we're doing it wrong. So, now, we don't go out and bait. We send an inspector out because you've got rats, he's not going to put bait down there. He's going to educate you on why you've got rats. Rats are not going to be in your house unless you brought them in there yourself. So, our inspectors will go out there, and they will show you what you've done wrong and what you can do right. They'll show you where you can plug up all the holes under your eaves, where you keep your dog food in the house at night, all the other things that you've been doing wrong. And it's been proven now, when you follow the instructions of our inspectors, you don't have the rats come back. So, that's our new direction. We are not poisoning the rats, we're educating you to keep them out. About West Nile virus, you've all probably heard that we have one adult case of West Nile virus in Orange County. Last year, the Santa Ana District in Orange County was number one in the nation in the number of West Nile virus infections in humans. This year, it's much slower because the cycle of birds, and that's complicated, but birds have immunity that they get from the first year. In order to protect you from West Nile virus, we've looked into, where are you getting bitten? What's going on? And it turns out that it's summertime. What do we do in the evening in summertime? We go to outdoor concerts, or so do the mosquitoes. That's a buffet for them. So, we're going out there in the mornings in areas that are hot for mosquitoes, and we are spraying the areas where the concerts will be held. That evening, there will be dead mosquitoes, and you people will be fairly safe. Just remember to cover your arms and your legs with DEET or some other mosquito repellent. It's turning out this is more effective this way, but if you're going out there, the mosquitoes are coming to you, let's eliminate the mosquitoes. So, before I leave, just to remind you, mosquitoes don't have to be the ones biting you, but they will be if you've got exposed skin, and if you're out there at night, if you're sweaty, if you've been exercising, and you're exhaling a lot, that attracts mosquitoes. Bare skin will attract mosquitoes. So, make sure that you cover up, you use DEET, and you avoid the areas if you can. If you don't, just stay protected. That's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. At this time, we're going to move into oral communications. At this time, members of the public may address the council regarding any items within the subject matter jurisdiction of the City Council. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the council cannot discuss or take action on any items not on the agenda unless authorized by law. Matters not on the agenda may, at the council's discretion, be referred to the City Manager and placed on a future agenda. Those members of the public wishing to speak are asked to come forward to the microphone, state their names for the record. All speakers will be limited to a period of five minutes. Any documents for review should be presented to the City Clerk for distribution.
Good evening. I'm Charles Antos. I'm here representing the Seal Beach Historical Society. Marie Antos, President of the Seal Beach Historical Society, had another engagement, and she couldn't be here. However, what I'm going to talk about, she considers actions by the city as coercion. Background, we're the only red car in Orange County and one of the oldest organizations, nonprofits in Seal Beach. We bring people from all over the world to enjoy the Red Car Museum and the history of Seal Beach, and we save it for future generations. The Seal Beach Historical Society received a call from Quinn Barrow, the city attorney. He informed the President, Marie, that the city now wants to modify our lease, or they will basically break it anyway. They want to move the Blue House onto our leased property. Why now? Well, probably because we understand the people on 8th Street are considering legal action against the city to have the Blue House moved. Now, this call is the first contact the city has had with the Seal Beach Historical Society Red Car Museum. We were never notified of anything pertaining to the Blue House until now. You would think that since we are the historical society with many, many members, we would have been asked for advice about saving the Blue House, but that was not done. Why? The city has, is going to consider modifying the lease, and we need to figure out how it's going to impact the Red Car and our programs. Again, we consider this to be extortion or blackmail, take your pick, whichever you prefer. Since the city has not gone through any due process relative to that Blue House, you haven't contacted the California Coastal Commission, and now, you want to move the Blue House somewhere. Well, you could move it to the DWP if you get a coastal permit, or the Zoder if you get a coastal permit. But now, what you're going to want to do is move it to someplace on the lease area of the historical society's property, the Red Car, that we have under lease. The other spots have a lot of parking and a lot of space, but you don't have any parking. The other thing, just to let you know, we tented the Red Car last week to get rid of termites. My understanding is that the Blue House is for termites. Guess what? We don't want termites re-infecting the Red Car. I don't know how long, how many times you're going to move this thing, back and forth, and pour new slabs and things like that, but, yes.
One minute.
You have the right to break the lease or modify the lease. No one has told us where you want to put it, but I don't know how many times you want to move it and how many slabs you want to pour before you go ahead and get a California coastal permit. But you might think about it and go through the process correctly, from the beginning to the end, and get some citizen input before you just go ahead and do whatever you have the right to do. That's it.
Mr. Attorney, did you want to address that now, or would you like to do it at the end of oral communications? Okay, thank you. Okay, anyone else?
Hi, my name's Jacob Rigio, a lifelong resident of Old Town. I'm having an issue with a citation that I know a lot of people have had an issue with, and it's in regards to the new parking pass, which for some reason, the City Council decided to waive the interim period between the two passes, even though it's always been like that. And to not respect a new pass that you just sold is ridiculous, and I can't seem to have my ticket erased because the city has created a bureaucratic loophole in which you have to go through a corporation to get anything changed, and, you know, that's obviously not in their best interest to change anything. What is the point of it going through a corporation, to the police department, back to the corporation, than to me? I don't understand how that makes any sense, and it's a black hole. You can't get in contact with anybody in regard to who controls changing citations. You can't get anything done there. It's a black hole, and I'd like to know why, you know, I mean, to me, it seems like it's a money pit. You're just trying to make more and more money, ticket as many people as you can. I see the tickets increasing in price every year. It's ridiculous. You guys got million-dollar properties, plenty of tax money coming in. You're telling me you can't figure out how to get the city to work with that money? What is wrong with this City Council? What's wrong with the police department? What's wrong with you people taking control of this city like you can just do whatever you want, willy-nilly? I agree with the guy about the Blue House. It doesn't make any sense. That house has been where it was forever. It didn't need to move, you know, and you put it in a ridiculous place. And I heard you bought a fire truck for no reason, not even from the city, but you want to add it to our historical system, not even asking the historical society. You guys need to rethink what you're doing, and this ticket issue is a problem, besides the increase in DUI checkpoints, which is illegal. Constitutionally, you cannot just stop everybody on the road without probable cause. So, I'd like the city to rethink what they're doing, and I'd like to see this ticket disappear, considering I paid for a parking pass, and I had one from the previous year. Why am I being fined? Can you tell me why there is this little loophole?
Could you do me a favor? Would you talk to the police chief? I'm sure that he's more than happy to walk out and discuss your issue with you.
All right. I just want you to know that I was told that you were the ones that made the decision to close that gap, and there was no information when you bought the new registration pass that there would be no gap, that you had to put up the new one the exact day that it started. You know, and by the way, the police department's phone number's not working right now, so you might want to check into that.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Anyone else?
Good evening, members of council. Hi, my name is Michael Niemeyer, and I'm a resident of 1101 Seal Way in the city of Seal Beach, and I'm a real fan of the city. I come here tonight with some problems, but I'm so glad that I don't have rats to worry about, so, anyway. I want to talk about the deterioration of life on south end of the beach, the proliferation of picnic tables and lawn chairs and chaise lounges and all this paraphernalia that's there now. We started a year ago, two years ago, when I started looking at this, we had two at the end. We now have 38 picnic tables, and they're all encroachments on the beach. We have 72 tables, I'm sorry, we have 72 lounge chairs of different sizes and variations. We have 40 end tables that are now on the beach, and these are left there 24 hours a day, and they've been here for a year. I'd like to show you another example. We have, these Adirondacks are attached to the city seawall, and they've been attached there for the last year, actually. City Manager Ingram's been made aware of this, Mayor Deaton, you've been made aware of this, and you choose to let this go. None of these are ADA compliant, none of them have liability, so I don't know how you're going to pay for a lawsuit when this glass-top table has been on the sand since October of last year. And if someone goes through it, you're all going to be, we're all going to be, as residents of the city, we're all going to pay a big bill on that, not to mention, as I said before, ADA compliance. None of these pieces of furniture are ADA compliant. I know that you're studying it, and I don't want to be cynical, but I will for a minute. I know that the way to kick a problem down the road is to study it, and this has been studied now for two years with no action, and it's proliferating and getting worse. Also, I'd like to complain about the sound. Well, before we go out for this, I want to know, if we get tired of all the action on our beach, can we just go up to Electric here and put up our own lounge chairs and our picnic tables, and maybe a couple sofas and some end tables? I don't know how the residents and the rest of you, and those of you who represent other areas other than Old Town, I don't know how you'd enjoy all this paraphernalia in your parks in your area. Also, the noise is getting worse. We're having parties now that go on till one. It just seems like there's a real deterioration. I've been here 11 years, and we're really going downhill on the south side of the pier. I really would like your help immediately. I don't think this is a study item, Mayor. I think this glass-top table ought to be removed tonight, and that's one I want to share with my other neighbors. We're having meetings about this to figure out how to get the city to take some action. Thank you.
Hi, Mayor Deaton and City Manager Ingram. We've met before on some of these, what we call quality of life issues. I am Matt Walker with my wife Jennifer Walker, and our neighbor Mike. We agree completely with everything Mike said, and slowly but surely, we are seeing a deterioration of our quality of life south of the pier. And as we pointed out to you about four or five months ago, we wonder why the city does not pay attention to our situation south of the pier on Seal Way. And we emailed to both you and Jill a few weeks ago, and Jill responded, "Thank you, Police Chief Joe," to our request for some attention to some issues that are occurring routinely now. This used to be something that would occur, I've lived here 35 years, all right, I've seen the city since 1980, and we've seen particularly in the last decade, things become less and less ruly down where we are, and more open to any type of public sinadigans that we want, that we want to have down there. So, that's one of them. We have rampant littering, we have parties, we have open containers, we have just completely ignoring any rules. The photograph we sent you, of course, was a group of people having a barbecue under the sign that says, "No barbecues." And our response, not from you and not from Jill, but as you handed off to Police Chief Joe to field the issue, was, "Call us if something happens." Well, it was right. We have, these Adirondacks are attached to the city seawall, and they've been attached there for the last year, actually. City manager Ingram's been made aware of this, Mayor Deaton, you've been made aware of this, and you choose to let this go. None of these are ADA compliant, none of them have liability, so I don't know how you're gonna pay for a lawsuit when, when this glass-top table has been on the sand since October of last year. And if someone goes through it, you're all gonna be, we're all gonna be, as residents of the city, we're all gonna pay a big bill on that. Not to mention, as I said before, ADA compliance. None of these pieces of furniture are ADA compliant. I know that you're studying it, and I don't wanna be cynical, but I will for a minute. I know that the way to kick a problem down the road is to study it, and this has been studied now for two years with no action, and it's proliferating and getting worse. Also, I'd like to complain about the sound. Well, before we go out for this, I wanna know, if we get tired of all the action on our beach, can we just go up to Electric here and put up our own lounge chairs and our picnic tables and maybe a couple sofas and some M tables? I don't know how the residents and the rest of you, and those of you who represent other areas other than Old Town, I don't know how you'd enjoy all this paraphernalia in your parks in your area. Also, the noise is getting worse. We're having parties now that go on till one. It just seems like there's a real deterioration. I've been here eleven years, and we're really going downhill on the south side of the pier. I really would like your help immediately. I don't think this is a study item, Mayor. I think this glass-top table oughta be removed tonight. And that's one I wanna share with my other neighbors. We're having meetings about this to figure out how to get the city to take some action. Thank you.
Hi, Mayor Deaton and City Manager Ingram. We've met before on some of these, what we call quality of life issues. I am Matt Walker with my wife Jennifer Walker and our neighbor Mike. We agree completely with everything Mike said, and slowly but surely we are seeing a deterioration of our quality of life south of the pier. And as we pointed out to you about four or five months ago, we, we wonder why the city does not pay attention to our situation south of the pier on Seal Way. And we emailed to both you and Jill a few weeks ago, and Jill responded, "Thank you, Police Chief Joe," to our request for some attention to some issues that are occurring routinely now. This used to be something that would occur, I've lived here thirty-five years, all right, I've seen the city for, since nineteen eighty, and we've seen particularly in the last decade, things become less and less ruly down where we are and more open to any type of public cynatics that we want, that wanna have down there. So that's one of them. We have rampant littering, we have parties, we have open containers, we have, just completely ignoring any rules. The photograph we sent you, of course, was a group of people having a barbecue under the sign that says "No Barbecues." And our response, not from you and not from Jill, but as you handed off to Police Chief Joe to feel the issue, was "Call us if something happens." Well, it was right in the middle of everything, and you couldn't ignore it. What we're asking for now is not, not to place the burden on the police, but to point back to where the lack of concern, in our opinion, comes from, and this is what we're here to address tonight, hopefully to start to get some attention on these issues before they become a greater issue for the good of the citizenry and, and of course, liability for the city. So, and just a quick aside for vectors, if you want a new project, come down to, come down to Eleventh Street, take care of the pigeons. I've been up and down the ladder with Orange County Vector, City of Seal Beach, nobody, nobody wants to touch that issue. Mosquitoes don't seem to bother anybody when it comes to slapping them, and rats, apparently, we can be educated on, but what can we do about the pigeons?
I would just like to add one more brief note on the issue with all of the furniture, et cetera, on the beach. What that does is it prevents the beach sweepers from being able to get all the trash and debris up, which is only creating even more of a problem for things like the rats, the rodents, the pigeons that wanna eat all of the crap that people leave behind. Yeah, it has been swept in those areas for over a year now. And if you walk down and take a look, I mean, it's ghetto, it's disgusting. I've only been in Seal Beach for twelve years, but I can tell you, I have seen a real degeneration. Parking issues, Chief Joe has heard me speak of this before on Seal Way. People think that it's an alley. It's not, it's our city street. Let's pay attention. Let's pay attention to the laws that are in place and enforce them. That's all we're asking for. Okay, thank you very much. Anyone else?
Good evening. My name's Scott Newman, and I've been a resident of College Park East for about a year now. Happy with most things since I moved in, but there's one issue I'd like the council to address. It's Seal Beach ordinance, or seven-point-five-five-zero-one-zero-k. It's outlawing dogs at all parks in College Park East. And I've contacted my council person about this, and he was unwilling to discuss accommodations or any compromises other than all parks would remain. So I'm now here seeking that the whole council take up the issue and all, I've lived, I'm thirty-five years old, I've been in parks my whole life. I grew up in the San Fernando Valley. No park I've ever come across there allows all dogs. I moved to, when I moved back from law school, moved back to the San Fernando Valley, same thing. Every city I've lived on, it's San Fernando Valley, Long Beach, Los Angeles, I'm familiar with parks in Orange County, I've never seen parks that don't allow dogs. And all, even in Seal Beach, all other areas, and I'm familiar with the history of the law, and it was sought that College Park East be specifically excluded and not allow any dogs whatsoever in parks. And I'm seeking from the council some sort of compromise. There's four parks in College Park East. Heather Park is, I don't know if you're aware, is often used for events, those sorts of things, that can stay dog-free. There's those residents of us in College Park East who would like to take our children to a park, take a dog for a walk at the same time. We can't do that. It has to be two separate events. If we want our dog to play in an outside park, we have to get into a car and drive. We can't take our dog for a nice leisurely walk, have him at the park. All I'm seeking from the council is some sort of compromise and some sort of even consideration of the issue, as the feeling I've gotten so far talking to others who've been in College Park East longer than I have, there was really no citizen input when the law was changed. My, the, what perspective I got is there's never really been any citizen input on the issue, so since Mr. Miller, when I had conversations with him, told me that it was a sanitary issue because games, it uses game fields, just as all other parks are, I just want some sort of compromise sought with citizen input, whether there are those residents in College Park East who would like some of the parks where they can take their dog and enjoy a day with their family at the park with their dog on a leash watching their kids play without having to get into a car to do it.
Good evening, city council members. Rondi Winkler, president of the Golden Rain Foundation, and I just realized today was the ninth anniversary of living in Seal Beach. First of all, I wanna thank city manager Jill Ingram and Jim, I'm gonna say this wrong, Rashah Basam and John Traul for giving us the ability to listen to a presentation at our president's council about a new worrisome challenge we have in the asbestos that was in our building destruction way back in the early sixties. And it really helped to alleviate some of the angst by the presidents, "Now what do we do?" And it was very helpful. John Traul, several months ago, a number of months ago, had also given a presentation to us regarding solar energy. As you know, some of our mutuals are developing solar power to alleviate some of the Edison bills, and it was an excellent presentation. I mean, it was one of the first ones I've ever understood, so that was important. We also appreciate your help with a water test that we made. We were trying to check to see if any of our water lines were leaking. The city said that we did fine on this test between ten PM and five AM. I didn't like the numbers, and we're gonna see if we can't even do a better job at conserving water there. It's been really helpful to bring city staff into our community so we can talk together about some of the issues that we face. And one of them was recently the Red Cross disaster managers came to talk to our emergency planning committee meeting. First of all, they were extremely impressed. There was probably twenty-five people plus in the room, and almost everybody has had cert training. So at least we, we have some idea of what we're doing up there. But then again, trying to plan for all the various emergencies, yes, tsunami, earthquake, well, talk about what would happen to our elderly community if we had an electrical outage for seven days plus, like they did up in Altadena in the bad windstorms, or possibly no water. I mean, there's things that can happen to us that aren't too pleasant, and we don't react very quickly to some of this. So bringing the city into our emergency planning, because we probably need you as much as you may need us. I mean, we're an excellent place to possibly take people in and/or house them and/or even build shelters inside Leisure World in some of our common areas. So again, we appreciate the interaction. It's, I haven't seen it before, so it's been very good to have that togetherness, for lack of better words, and we do appreciate it. We hope to get Tim Kelsey in for recreation soon to talk about some of our issues there. But thank you, and thank you particularly to our city manager.
Joyce Parquet, Old Town Seal Beach. I wanna thank Michael and Will for cleaning up Pacific Coast Highway and the trail up there. When I got up there Saturday morning and saw that truck, it was unbelievable. So thank you, Michael and Will. And I wanna thank Joe. He's got two of my grandkids, and she loves it, but they all do. They love it, and they're ready for next year. All ready. She's a good swimmer. So next, I have to get to the city manager and her dear neighbor response about the utility taxes. I'm not real sure that is a general tax, and by law, general tax revenues go into the general fund, but I will find out, because I have other documents saying that you need to put, like you put the, the Inloo parking fees into the general fund until you were required to put them in a separate account. You put Measure M gas money into a separate account. You put the oil money into a separate account for the beach. So I'm not real sure if that's correct, but I want to find out, and, because it's double talk, dear neighbor, double talk. And the other question I wanna go back to is these dinners that everybody's having, these dinners with Diane Ripley. I mean, I went to look at Form 700, and she's not in there for twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen. Come on. She's a contract, she's contracted with the city. Miss city manager, dear neighbor, she contracted with you, and I think you even put her on a schedule for October, November, December, twenty fourteen. So where is her Form 700? And did Vicky ever get to do the 501(c)(3)? Vicky, she says you don't have anything to do. Why don't you find out how to get me a 501(c)(3)? Now with that 501(c)(3), she wants fifty thousand dollars. Is that the fifty thousand dollars that you required from the fish company to put up, non-refundable? Was that to go for her? I mean, there's a lot of issues here. You know, we can't keep up with all this stuff that's going on. And the kid that just left about his parking ticket, he wanted to know why the police department had to ticket everybody. Well, they got eight hundred thousand dollars negative to keep the police department open. And we got, we got the pier, we got the restaurant on the pier closed. Why? Because we can't get fifty thousand dollars for Diane Ripley? Well, I'm coming down to, on July twenty-eighth, I asked for two eighteen Eighth Street part, uh, planning department permits. I don't have them. I don't have them. I know they're there, 'cause I was up there with Crystal. She was reading them off to me. I need them. I'm in the private sector. I need them. Now, Mayor Deaton and the city manager and the city clerk, somebody doesn't want me to have these permits. I need them. I need them for an insurance company. Where are they? July twenty-eighth, twenty fifteen, they're right up there on the computer. This has never happened to me before, never. Is it the city clerk?
One minute.
Is it the city clerk? Is it you, Mayor Deaton, or the city manager that's trying to hamper me when I'm in the private sector? Who is doing this? You're up there having parties all the time and dinners and 501(c)(3)'s, and yet, all I needed was a copy of the permits. That's all I needed. I don't have them yet. How am I supposed to give them to the insurance company and the preser? Somebody's playing games with me. Now, if you wanna play that game, I know how to write the Attorney General of California. I know how to write it. I've written it twice, not on you yet. But I wanna know where my permits are. Why weren't they emailed to me? It's right there. You need a copy? It's right there. Now, stop this. We're supposed to be transparent down here. It's our money. It's the taxpayers of Seal Beach money, not your money. I pay property taxes. I pay utility taxes.
Time.
Time. Who's responsible?
All right, anyone else?
Good evening, Mayor Deaton, members of council staff, residents and visitors. Seth Eker, resident, Old Town. I'm gonna try to run through a list again of several different hats and roles. The first one is I have the honor and humble privilege of serving as this year's chair for the Americana Awards. Currently nominations are open, and I know that's been circulated to a number of people, so I'd also wanna notify the public that if the public would like to nominate someone for the Americana Awards and understand what that's all about, I'm happy to send them for. And my email is seth@blackmarbleconsulting.com. If you do have a nominee in mind, and that could be any person who lives, works, or serves in Seal Beach, that nomination is due by August twenty-first. They may not be an elected official. I remember two is about item E for me. The Lions are really excited about this clock. We're really excited about the brick installation. Laura Ellsworth has been the lead, and I wanted to point her out as available for questions, should there be any questions about that project. I also support privately as a citizen, item G. I think that there really is a need for this type of committee and formalizing some structure so that we can move through regular meetings and deal with, with our historic heritage. I think it's very important. My next item is to support items D and C, which have to do with grants to the police force. And I also have the privilege of being a member of the Seal Beach Police Foundation, and every time I see grants there and matching funds, I get excited, because that means our police officers are able to get tools or assets or cash that does not have to be borne by the city exclusively, and that's terrific news, and I think we should continue that as much as possible. Item five, wow, the centennial. As co-chair of marketing, I had the privilege of writing an article in The Sun about the photo shoot. I happened to be out of the country on the underside of the world when that hit the public, and my email blew up like a Christmas tree. I think I had about forty-five emails. There are a lot of citizens who wanna participate in this photo, and I just wanted to thank all of those people who reached out. It will be done on the twenty-second, this centennial bathing suit photo shoot. I believe we'll even have maybe some special guests there from our, from our city. And I wanna encourage you to, if you have not already, please communicate to SealBeachCentennialMarketing@gmail.com for more information or if you would like to be considered as a candidate. We're actually almost full with thirty-two slots, so we're gonna have a few reserve extras, but we're making great progress with that. Finally, with the overall centennial, August twenty-second, it's gonna be this amazing beach party. You've seen the advertising, there's gonna be another article in The Sun about it. It'll be St. Castle Building, it'll be surf lessons, it's fun for the whole family. The Lions, again, are delighted to support that event with food. It's really coming together. You know, I have described participation in the centennial committee as a painful joy. You know, it's some challenges, but it's really all coming together quite nicely.
One minute.
I also wanted to recognize staff, particularly Tina Knapp and Patrick Gallegos for their involvement in this centennial. They put up with us, and that's exhausting, I'm sure. I know it is sometimes for me, just to put up with us all. And I think that's just about it. Just again, a reminder, Americana Award nominee, and I'd love to maybe hear about people that aren't always in front of the microphone, that maybe have more quiet service, so please feel free to nominate. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to close oral communications, and this is the time now that we can respond to those comments that have been made. As those of you who are here frequently know, that as the comments are being made, the council needs to wait their turn. So this is our turn now, and we will begin with our city attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. Regarding the, the Historical Society lease, there's been no coercion, no blackmail, no extortion, anything of the sort. Council knows, the public may not be aware, that the Historical Society releases a portion of the green belt from the city for the princely sum of a dollar a year, and that lease has been in effect, I believe, since nineteen eighty-one. And it's a large portion of the green belt that's in excess of And it's a large portion of the green belt that's in excess of the actual property on which the red car sits. It's also some of the surrounding property to the, on both sides, and also towards Main Street. Mr. Barrow contacted the Antoses at the request of the city to see if the Historical Society would be interested in some amendments to the lease, one of which having to do with the fact that the lease references as being the landlord of the lease, the redevelopment agency, which no longer exists. Another one being the question of whether we could adjust the lot line essentially of that leased property to allow the city some flexibility in perhaps relocating the blue cottage at such time as a permanent location has changed. We weren't trying to get rid of the red car, or reduce the size of the property to eliminate the red car. We were trying to propose amending the lease to take back some of the excess property that the Historical Society doesn't use, and it's not needed for the red car. Mrs. Antos, in that phone conversation, asked Mr. Barrow what the alternatives were, and he mentioned that, as is a matter of public record, the lease is essentially a month-to-month lease and can be terminated by either party on 30 days' notice. Mrs. Antos asked Mr. Barrow to send her a letter with a map of what the city was proposing to be the new leased property, which I saw that he sent out today. It was civil, cordial, professional, not in any way intimidating or coercive. And that letter was sent to the Historical Society today. We were hoping that perhaps the Historical Society would want to partner with the city in trying to make some adjustments to where that, the blue cottage will ultimately be permanently located. And I think just to also correct the record, and one other point is, I know that the Director of Community Development was in contact frequently with the Coastal Commission, and had some pretty extensive exchanges with the Coastal Commission throughout the process of relocating the cottage, and that relocation took place with full knowledge of the Coastal Commission. And as we pointed out in the public session, I think it's important to keep remembering that the Coastal Commission had issued a permit to demolish the cottage to the private property owners who previously owned it. I did also want to just respond, Mayor, if I could, to, there was a question about the nature of the utility tax, and whether or not it's in fact a general tax. And I participated in the response that was referenced, and I just want to make sure we're all clear on that, and perhaps save some research time. Chapter 4.50 of the Municipal Code is the Utility Users Tax. Section 4.50.005 says, "The taxes imposed by this chapter previously have been established solely to raise revenue for the general governmental purposes of the city. The revenues generated thereby shall be deposited in the general fund of the city and may be expended for any proper municipal purpose." Utility tax is a general tax, as was pointed out in that response. Thanks.
Thank you. City Manager?
Yes, Mayor, I have a couple items tonight. Will you be commenting on Mr. Niemeyer and Mr. and Mrs. Walker's comments tonight?
Yes, but you may if you would prefer.
Okay, I just wanted to comment that our staff's been working with Coastal Commission staff in preparation for this item. I know council directed an item to come back to you for discussion, and so we'll be waiting for policy direction, but just wanted it known for the record that staff is working on that item at council's direction, and we'll bring it back to you in September. Second item I have is the gas company and Time Warner Cable were working out at the location near where we have a water main break two weeks ago on Lanson that created some ancillary issues for the city, including our phone service was down at City Hall, both incoming and outgoing calls all afternoon today. So I'd like to ask our Deputy Public Works Director, Michael Ho, just to briefly comment on that issue today. Michael?
Thank you, City Manager Ingram, Honorable Mayor and Council. Today we contact, the gas company has contacted us about some brief work that was going on early this morning. In doing such work, they're exploratory near our water main break. During that exploratory drilling, they did hit a Time Warner Cable fiber optic line which disturbed telecommunications line throughout the city and other parts of the city. Time Warner Cable has notified us stating that they will be working late tonight till about 10:00 PM. Hopefully, all communications will be restored at that time, and shortly after, the gas company will return tomorrow to finish up all gas company work.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. And finally, Mayor, previous speaker spoke and made reference to some alleged gifts that perhaps myself as a City Manager and/or any of my staff may have received via any dinners, and I just want to set the record straight tonight that any gifts, if there are any, are accurately reported on our annual conflict of interest statements. That's all I have tonight.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Verapapa?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Deaton. I just wanted to mention I went to the National Night Out last week, Police Chief Joe and your police department, the Police Foundation, all the volunteers there did a great job. The turnout was tremendous. I think there's over 2,000 people there, if I heard correctly. I particularly liked the fact that Cypress was there, and La Sometas was there, and a lot of people in this room were there too, so really great event, and thank you. Keep it up. And I also wanted to mention the junior guards and give kudos to Mike Diller and Chief Joe Bailey for a wonderful program that I have personal involvement with, with my daughter being involved with it. She was a little hesitant at first, going every day, and by the middle of it, she was the first one to bed and the first one awake, ready to go every morning, and it's really kind of a great event. All the guards have positive attitudes and are great role models, and there's a real learning experience that goes along with that. It's not all fun and games out there. They're really learning about the water, and riptides, and everything else about the sea. I think it's a great event. Ended up going to the barbecue last weekend, another fun event. They have an awesome video, if anyone gets a chance to see that video, watch it. I didn't realize how much the guards themselves, they're rock stars when their names were called, men and women, all the kids just go crazy about seeing their leader, I guess. It was just a good event. I think it's great for this city. I drive to Irvine every morning, I see down Coast Highway, I see the junior guards at Huntington Beach, I see it in Newport Beach, and I see it in Seal Beach. It's, I think it's awesome, so keep up the good work. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Councilmember Miller?
Okay, since that did come up, Joe, again, it was another great National Night Out. It was terrific. Good that we're cooperating with the other cities, I think because we are, our police forces do work together, and that's important, and it even bonds you more, I think. And Joe, another great year. I think the lifeguard program is just fantastic. And yet, you see those kids, and they all have respect for the instructors, too. So there's just more than learning to be a lifeguard, there's a lot of, I won't call it discipline, but a lot of respect by the kids. It's a great program. I'd also like to ask if the city would, Mayor, if you'd prepare a letter from the city to the CPUC regarding the Verizon Frontier asset transfer. What's happening is Verizon is doing away with all their fixed assets and going totally to the wireless communications. And so I attended the workshop today, and I left our assistant city managers there for the public hearing tonight. But what they wanted to know, and the reason for the letter, is they want to know the operational status of the facilities. And in particular, in College Park East, our copper wire telephone facilities are poor. We, rain shuts down the telephones, sprinkler system shuts down the telephones, and maybe the high water level also does that. But we have bad service, we've never been able to get it fixed. I won't even mention Shelley. Shelley finally gave up and switched to another program, which many people have. But I'd like to have a letter commenting on that, and then they've asked for that. Tell us the operational status, and I happened to mention that before I left the workshop tonight. And also, maybe referencing the fact that Verizon promised the city in 2007 that they would put FiOS in the entire city, and they failed to do so in College Park West and College Park East, and I think that's worth putting in there. I don't see that they're going to do it anytime soon, but it's still worth putting in there because we had a promise, Mayor Larson had a promise from Verizon that he would, that they would do the whole city, and they have failed.
Could you work with staff on that, please, for me?
Yeah, I'll follow up with City Manager and Assistant City Manager on it. Thank you.
Councilmember Masalavat?
I'd like to thank Rondi Winkler for being so diligent and coming to our meetings. It's been a long time coming. Leisure World has been here for 54 years, people have been living there, and we don't know each other, but that's changing now, and I hope you see, I see nodding heads out here. I hope that you see more Leisure World people in your organizations and participating in what's going on in the rest of, sees your world, I almost said. I'm trying to re-educate my members, but in any case, I hope that we all can participate together in doing different things around town, and hopefully, some of you, Rondi kind of spoke about it in the past, maybe letting people take bus tours of Leisure World so you can see what's behind those walls. It really is a cool little environment, and I think you'd be surprised at what you see if you've never been in there. That's all I have.
Mayor Prochance.
I guess it's a Leisure World night, but I wanted to comment, I had the great fortune of going to lunch with three WWII vets, and I can tell you, these people, it truly was the greatest generation, and I really wanted everyone to know that we have some very bright people that live in Leisure World, and I sure appreciate them.
Thank you. Well, as mentioned, I want to get back to some of the oral comments tonight so that people don't leave feeling that they haven't had their concerns addressed, because often I know that when we can't respond immediately, it seems as though we're not listening. So I would like to go back to the benches on the sand and ask, which meeting are you planning on in September?
I believe it's the second meeting.
The second meeting in September. Okay, so we can get the word out so that everyone knows about that. There have been calls to me regarding noise levels, and I think we're addressing those as well. At least I know you and I have been, and I hope to get follow-through with the others. I would like to also address, someone said that we should have left the Blue House on the original site. We did until they wanted to tear it down and build another home there, and that was no longer possible to do. And also, someone said that we had purchased a fire engine. I believe that's one of our original fire engines, is that correct, City Manager? From way back when, we did not just purchase an antique fire engine. I think it's important that people know the truth. And I think there's only one other thing I have, and if I have not answered your question that you brought tonight, please be me afterwards, I'm more than happy to. I have reported in the past that AB 1217 is dead, and that we had a victory on the Orange County Fire Authority Board of Maintaining Our Representation. It seems that while the Assembly Bill was pulled, now there is talk of amending a bill and sticking it on the back, and there are some other ideas that Assemblyman Tom Daley and Orange County Fire Authority Unions are thinking about. So I just want the public to know, this is not dead, and we are still continuing to work on it. We will not let it go. Representation for our $5 million a year is crucial, and your City Council will be fighting for that. So with that, that is the end of our oral communications for tonight, and I would like to move on now to the consent calendar. Do I have a motion to accept the consent calendar as amended?
Still move. Second.
Please vote. Five zero to accept the consent calendar. Next, I will address item E, which was pulled by Councilmember Miller. Do we have a staff report?
I don't need a report, Ms. Joe wants to give a report.
Well, I would prefer to have one, thank you.
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Our Deputy Public Works Director, Michael Ho, will present this item tonight.
I think it's good for the public because they don't have everything we have.
Thank you, City Manager Ingram. Tonight's Agenda Item E item is the approval of Centennial, installation of Centennial bricks and a donation agreement with the Seal Beach Lions Foundation. The Centennial Brick Program is a fundraising program that the city and the Centennial Committee participated in. The fundraising has now completed its closure, and the installation of the bricks are to be located in five locations. We do have a PowerPoint presentation that we have on, to show the four locations. The fifth location is in Leisure World, and in Leisure World, we are having an agreement with Leisure World that we're working with them currently to have the bricks installed with them. The first location is Blue Bell Park. This is the area that it's proposed. The shaded area that you see in the hatched area is concrete, and the red area is the proposed bricks. Second slide is in Edison Park. The shaded area is a new concrete walkway with the red detailing where the location of the bricks are. The third location is in Marina Community Park with the red detailing the brick location. And lastly, is Eisenhower Park. The blue area will be the new pavers, and the white will be in the concrete, and the far end, which is the red, will be in the new bricks area. All these areas can still be detailed out in the field. It hasn't been finalized yet, but this is just a general idea of how the bricks will be laid out.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Miller?
Yeah, I just wanted to mention at Blue Bell Park, I talked to Assistant City Manager, Patrick Gallegos, that this is still not the final site. What happened is, we originally were going to do it around the ficus tree, which died. And what we didn't realize was, they moved the new tree 20 feet back toward the street, so there's not as much room now between the street and the tree as there had been in the past, so. I think we're going to work on it, I'm going to be working with Shelley, and we're going to work on it. We're looking at this area as one, it's probably not a bad area, that's one option, and we'll tee off of this and put benches under each one of those pine trees. That's the idea, to pick up some shade under the, I mean, in the park, you know. So otherwise, we may still consider our site at Heather Park. So we're trying to decide, and I imagine the time is short?
There is some.
The guy over your shoulder said yes, Mike.
There is flexibility in the installation.
Is there a target date for having it done?
We're working with the Centennial Committee, we're looking probably about in a month.
Mike's not looking at them, they're saying yes. Okay. We're working on it. I'm going on vacation, but we're working on it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Are there any other comments?
I would just like to thank the Lions Club so much for the clock. Oh, it's gone. It looks absolutely beautiful, and I think with the pavers and the walkway and everything, it's just going to be absolutely stunning. And so glad that you chose the two-faced clock so that the kids that are out in the water and the mothers that are sitting there waiting for them can say to the kid, "You had no excuse," like I used to tell mine. So thank you very much. Okay, with that, I'll take a motion to approve item E.
I make a motion to approve Agenda Item E.
Second. Please vote. And that's five zero to approve that. We have no public hearing items. We have unfinished and continued business. We have a quarterly parking project update. Do we have a staff report, please?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. I'm going to turn this item over to Vicki Beetley, our Finance Director, and she'll be inter- be introducing our consultant, Janice Rhodes, who's working with council and staff on the downtown comprehensive parking plan. So Vicki?
Thank you, City Manager Ingram, Mayor, members of the council. Janice Rhodes is joining us again tonight. As you may recall, she is the Principal from J, our Parking Consultants, and has been with us from the beginning of this project. And I will, before I turn it over to Janice, to talk about a couple of the, the key points, I will say that parking permit sales have slowed as we expected, but we have definitely sold more parking permits this year than in the past. Part of that, I believe, is because we had the two big ads in the Sun when we were talking about the, the permit issues originally about where to place them. And then we had another one to talk, to remind people about the contractor parking as well. So the contractor parking permits in Old Town especially are up significantly over prior years, so appreciate the efforts of the Police Department to notify those contractors. We did have sort of a period for them to go ahead and come into City Hall. The parking enforcement officers were putting reminder notifications on the contractors' windows and in some cases perhaps even talking with them, but really appreciate the efforts of the entire parking team. And with that, I'll turn it over to Janice and then of course at the end, any questions that you might have for either Janice or myself will be happy to take them.
Good evening. It's a pleasure to be here again and share with you what we've undertaken and give you an update of what we've completed, what we have in progress and what's coming up in this next quarter. I feel like I was just here a few weeks ago, so some of this is very, very current because you've just heard a bit about it. The first thing I wanted to talk about is the permits. This year, we converted from the bumper permits to the hang tags that are displayed on the rearview mirror. And the reason for that, and it's very common in all cities, the permits, when they're stuck on the bumper with the new materials that we have in the bumper, when residents take them off, the paint comes with it. And there's a lot of complaint with those kind of bumpers, permits, so we wanted to go something, do a type of permit that would be easier and more acceptable to the community for looking at that. Now that's made some changes, which I'll talk about in a few minutes. The other side, and that is the side where we do the enforcement and how all of that works. We also had, I think when we first started that implementation of the sales of the permits, one of the first things we heard back was the open-air vehicles, golf carts, convertibles, even motorcycles. And we have permits ordered that will affix those permits to those front windshields, which will solve that problem of the open-air vehicles, so the permit wouldn't be stolen and be lost from that kind of a process. So that resolution is already underway.
Janice, excuse me, if I could interject there again with the parking team. The parking team actually brought the issue to the meeting that we had and the immediate fix was to issue them a sticker that was used by a very small number of residents for a particular street in the city. So we contacted all of the open-air vehicle purchasers and brought them in and exchanged the hang tag for the A sticker, as we called it, at the suggestion, again, of parking enforcement. And then the sticker that Janice is talking about, it will be an RFID sticker, so we'll go ahead and, and change it to the new sticker format as well. But just wanted to highlight, especially talk about this because there are some open-air vehicle owners that we still haven't gotten a hold of, so if they happen to watch the meeting, they know now that they can come in, if anybody knows of them, they can come in. But the solution that Janice is talking about will be in the very near future.
Is there a reason we can't have placards for the beach parking permits? I think I've asked City Manager, but I forgot the answer.
If, Councilmember Miller, I don't know that there is a reason for them or not for them. The challenge with the parking, with placards for parking is, is again, with the enforcement, they like to see the permit affixed to the car and, and we have them assigned to specific cars with specific license plates, so if there's a placard, the likelihood that someone would move it from car to car or give it to a friend is very high.
But why, why would that be different than a residential? And people could do it with residential also?
No, actually they can't. They are, they are tied to a specific license plate. The only ones that could be moved from vehicle to vehicle are the guest parking permits, not the resident parking permits.
I guess one of my constituents was saying he has to get a sticker to stick in his window and he'd prefer to have a placard. So if you had a placard assigned to his car, then that's the only car you'd use that placard for, right?
That's correct.
Yes, that, that's true. I mean, there's no reason for us not to, we are just rolling out the initial implementation. I was just highlighting to you what the, what, what we have right now and in the future, if we move to placard, we can do that as well.
And to add to Vicki's, there's no reason that we, that we should not look at that and try to get that. You know, my hope is that by this time next year, we have all of your permits with RFID technology and we have that consistent, you know, across the board with your permits.
Okay, that's one thing I heard, that people prefer not to have the stickers in their window, so, thank you.
Okay. The next program that we have underway, and the last time I was here, just a few weeks ago, we, we talked about it to pretty expanded discussion and I wanted to highlight what we've been able to do since that point in time. And that's the citation processing contract. We changed that out and have noticed the current provider. There was a 60-day clause in that agreement, so the changeover to the new company would be the middle of September. And the length of that time has a lot to do with the transference of the codes, access codes with DMV. It just takes them about six weeks to eight weeks to complete that process, so that will be transferred over at that point in time. Part of that implementation, when we have all of that, the discussion that was earlier this evening from one of the residents that had to do with their frustration of trying to get information about the parking citation and their appeal process. With the new system, this will help tremendously because there will be internet access and a link to the City Council so that both police and here at City Hall would be able to provide computers for access to be able to see their, their citations, where it is in the process, as well as they could do it from home at any point in time. So the new system will allow much more access to information for city staff as well as permit holders and people receiving citations and being able to pay for those permits and citations and be able to access for the appeals process, so we're all excited about that. With that rollout on September, the middle of September, when all of that takes place, we'll also be doing a lot of training with city staff about the new system and how to access information and be able to look at all of the information and including a number of departments in that. And then owner about October the 1st will also have some community outreach and communication to the community about the changes in the system and what will be available for them to be able to have access to in that process. So that's where we are at this point. You'll see a lot of action and activity and probably hear some information about that pretty extensively in the next two months. The next item that we have underway, and we talked briefly about it, is the equipment for issuing the citations and being able to have the ability to do that electronically. At this time, all the officers are issuing those citations manually, which means they have to fill out all of those data that's on the ticket. And then the current firm comes and picks those up and they do the data entry on it. And that timeline between the time that it's issued until it may get into the computer system can be up to seven days, which can add to the frustration of your residents who may receive a citation of how long it takes before they can access and learn information. And with the new system and the handhelds, the intent is for all that to be able to go into the system within a 24-hour basis or almost immediately or the same day, so that that will help eliminate some of those issues. The issue that we have, and I'll be, share, quite frankly with you and share with you, the first samples of the Trimble system that we received and the Police Department working with and testing in the field, we have not had as good of a range of being able to pick up that RFID technology as we would like to have. And Trimble has issued us, and they are in the state and will be in the city's hands either tomorrow or, or on Wednesday, the new handhelds for them to test because it will double the range in which they'll be able to access that RFID and make the jobs for the enforcement staff much easier as they do the patrolling on the lot. And that item for the equipment, we would expect to come back in early September, once we've resolved and we're all assured and comfortable that that technology will do the reads that we need to have. I would think, Vicki, if I'm correct, we're going to try to get that on the first meeting in September?
That's great.
Okay, so we'll be back at that point in time with that package. Then there's two other programs that we have underway. We have underway looking at your downtown district and reviewing the signage for consistency in this district, both the residential and the commercial parking areas to help improve that communication and understanding because there are some inconsistencies in how all of that's laid out. We're just finishing up all the field work and the presentation materials and expect that, at least the communication with the entities who need to review that, including the community, probably starting in September, late September of, and October of establishing that. We expect to have updates for you once those community meetings are completed and we see where we want to go with that, those reviews. And then the last one is the beach lots. We have a program underway, ready to implement. We're just waiting for the off-peak season to arrive where we can implement it. And that is that we are changing the power, are providing power and communication lines to all of the pay stations in the beach lots, so that that will improve, right now they're battery operated and then it's a call-up cell phone service. So when a person wants to pay for their parking in the beach lots, you know, there's a lag time of making all those connections and if the connections are not good, then the person keeps trying to work with a transaction to get it completed. And the way we need to solve that is to get the power and the communication lines to each of those machines. So we expect that work to start after Labor Day.
I have a few questions, anybody else?
I do.
Go ahead.
Yeah, um, was there a float time then in the June-July timeframe? I think we had in the past when you get your old parking permit to the new, I think that was kind of an issue raised earlier.
Um, they, they, yes, your old permits were valid till June 30th, absolutely.
I saw a float time if it was valid.
It got overlapped. Your, your old, your, your, the previous permits were valid till June 30th. Of course, the permit, new permits were being issued in June and I think it was just, you know, an oversight of being able to see that both of those permits were there.
I, I think that's probably a, a question for Vicki. Vicki?
Well, and actually, I'd, I'd actually like to turn that one over to Chief Stilenovich because of the enforcement side and then I can fill in.
Okay.
Honorable Mayor of City Council, we have a one-week grace period in July, but if you don't tell anybody at home, but if you show your old permit for that first week, we won't give you a ticket. So there is a slight float time and grace period.
Okay, thank you. Also, you mentioned that there'd be a, a challenge to the citation, appeal process coming, but is there one now? I didn't really get that part of the process.
Yes, you always have a process where anyone, and we always had that, anyone who receives a citation can appeal that process. Right now it's just manual and so the, you know, the person has to call into a toll-free number to try to find out the status of it and that can be a bit frustrating because they don't have the tools to be able to access it and see where they are, their appeal is in the process.
Yeah, I could understand that with the third-party involvement. I think, you know, the people of Seal Beach and other places, they really value the fact they can come to City Hall and talk to people and they know exactly what they're talking about.
Absolutely.
That's frustrating to people in town, I would assume.
And that was one of the first things when I started working with Vicki and the city staff here, of being able to review and hear the feedback on was the, and that's why the implementation, that's the first thing we're trying to solve, is you, the staff and the city needs the tools where you can be more responsive to your residents coming to the city.
Because in the past, you put the sticker on, you're done with it, you never see the thing again. I have a placard at work and I take it off all the time. Does this placard have to be visible with the automated mechanism or is it one of those things where it'll read it if it's in the seat or in the cubby or, you know? I know now you have to see it because there's no automated mechanism, but.
And that, and that's what we're trying to solve with these new handhelds, is to have the range where we can capture that, that if someone forgets to hang that hang tag.
Even if it's sitting on your seat and no one reads it, or if it's on your dashboard or on the, on the floor.
Yeah, and we're not satisfied with the first round of handhelds we received, so we want these secondary handhelds with the wider range to be able to pick that up.
So it needs to be visible then, or?
Um, yes. The rules you syndicate right now, all the permits must be displayed.
Yes.
And Councilman, this is one of our largest complaints of the moment because the Sun ran an article about the new technology and our ability to read it anywhere in the car. So I would like the public and the council both to understand that currently, the, the rule are, rule is that it has to be visible, but currently if it is not visible, there is no way for parking enforcement to know there's one in that vehicle. So absolutely it must be visible.
Absolutely.
I would imagine there's a big learning curve for the residents, so that's all I have, thank you.
Okay, I, I want to piggyback on that. The complaints that I've been getting are about the hang tag itself because legally we're not supposed to drive with them on the mayor, right?
Madam Mayor, City Council, that is correct.
Yeah, so you've got to take them off and then you have to remember to put them back on. And so I had a question last week when someone said, can we put them in the blind spot in the back on the left-hand side, you know, like where you'd hang your dry cleaning and just affix it there? And so the answer to that was, well, no, that's not an allowed place, but we're having trouble with people remembering and I think that if, when we get down to it, if we can't read them within the car, people are going to opt for the stick-on stickers because it's too much to take it off, go to the grocery store, put it back on, drive home, take it off again to go to the dry cleaners and put it back on and drive home again. And we forget.
And there are a couple of options and Vicki and I have talked about that, that we're exploring to try to resolve that issue, that if someone doesn't want the hang tag and that kind of change out and change in, that we've got some alternatives, so.
Yeah, I think, I think we're going to need to get there because I'm glad you're already addressing the golf carts and the convertibles because that was also brought up. But I do think that's not a bad idea to put it in the blind spot on that, in the back passenger, left-hand side.
Madam Mayor, City Council, the Police Department is very flexible on the positioning of the permit. However, we would like it uniform. The only issue I could see with your recommendation at this time, and this immediately is an assessment, is if cars with very dark tinted windows in the back could become a problem.
Tinted windows, is that what you said?
Yes, tinted windows in the, in the rear passenger seats. If they have very dark windows, it could become problematic for that location. But I, I like the idea of the outside thinking and we are flexible to the positioning.
Okay, well, I think it's a work in progress and what I've been asking people is to just give us grace for the first year and we'll all try to work through this together and, and be helpful. Could you outline the appeals process for me that we're going to be looking at?
Sure. What is allowed in this, in the process is that within that first, 15 days in this city? 15 days in this city, when they receive a citation, they can appeal that citation. It then goes through a process of what we call the first level. It then goes through a process of what we call the first level of review, which means the police department staff are reviewing to make sure, you know, there was no technical problem with the issuance of the ticket, there wasn't a problem in how it was issued or that might be our fault. And then, the decision is provided back to the resident after that first review. If it's upheld, which means they have the opportunity to go to the second level. If it's sustained, then it's removed from the record and the matter is closed. If they go to the second level of a hearing, that's a process where they're heard before a hearing officer, and that has to be scheduled in a time period where they can come in to the police department and present their case before the hearing officer.
Is that our police department doing it?
Yes. Again, you have to have a third-party hearing officer, independent of that person, both the person issuing the ticket and independent of the processing company. And you have a firm with certified examiners who administer those hearings.
So, it is a third party then?
Yes. They're no longer heard by judge and municipal courts or in superior courts. And, you know, back in 1993, when we pulled that out, a lot of it had to do with that because it just was burdening the courts so heavily to listen to parking citation appeals. So, it's now done at administrative level because parking citations are an infraction as opposed to a criminal or other kinds of violations. It's just strictly a violation.
Okay. I think it's really important for everyone to understand. I know I learned the hard way myself that what the appeals process looks at is, was it a, was it a good ticket? It doesn't look at how good your reason was for why you didn't have the parking sticker there. And I, and that's really important because in my case, it was stolen off my car. I thought I should never, I should not have to pay that ticket. But the fact is that they wrote a good ticket. I did not have a parking sticker. And I think that's what causes a lot of the frustration, is people don't understand when it goes through the appeals process, if they have what they think is a really good reason, then they don't think they should have to pay it.
And that's why we have the hearing with that independent hearing officer so that that gives the opportunity for the person to present their individual cases and be heard. And that officer can determine, that hearing officer or hearing examiner can then determine whether it's sustained or upheld.
Okay. And that's why it goes to a third party.
Yeah. The only other question I had was, as a city, you're asking for a grace period from your residents to kind of be patient. I mean, where's their grace period? I mean, that's kind of an issue. I mean, if it's a learning process for us, wouldn't it be even a bigger one for our residents? I used to have one of those stickers. I didn't even buy one. I'm not going to buy one anymore. I'm just going to park for an hour. But I could kind of see, and I hate to bring it up like that, but I just hate to see the frustration with people. And there is a learning curve for everybody, I mean, on both sides. So, we're asking for forgiveness or, you know, but...
No, what I've asked them to do is wait on putting it in your back window until we work through the process to do it. We're working to get it happened.
Have there been a lot of appeals?
Yes, there have been a tremendous number of appeals.
So, that's, I mean...
And how are we handling that? I'll turn that over to, well, the process right now is a manual process. They have to go online, fill out a form, fill it out, and manually put it back into some email-type format to get the process going. And then...
Well, I guess the question is different than that.
Okay.
It's what Mike is saying. Are we, are we being more lenient right now during the...
Turn that over to the chief because I can't answer for the question on the administrative reviews.
Are you being a good guy or a bad guy, Joe?
We're trying to be very fair, as always, in the administration of the law. What happens is someone fills out their form. And the most common thing is when a resident forgets to put their thing out. And they come in, they go, "Look, here's my permit, here's my receipt." And we have been more generous than not, as of late, in understanding as there is a learning curve. However, it says you have to display your permit. That's what the law says. So, it is also enforced at times. You have lots of questions about the process, and I'll try to more personalize it a little bit for you. The resident comes in and fills out the form and says, "Here, I didn't deserve this ticket for these reasons." It then goes to my traffic sergeant, which is Sergeant John Scott, who does a first run, look at him, says, "Well, do they really deserve the ticket? Did they not deserve the ticket?" And he weighs all the factors. And if he at that point says, "No, that's a good ticket," we'll go then to say, "Hey, we think we're going to uphold this ticket, but you're welcome to go to the third-party independent person to review it, where you can state your case." And if the citizen chooses to do that, they may or may not prevail.
Let me ask another question. If, I think one of the things that could solve this whole thing for this period, can they just put them on their dash so that they don't have to keep taking them in and out? We have indicated that the dash is a good secondary position for the placard.
So, that's a place that you can legally leave it and drive?
It's slightly problematic from an enforcement perspective.
Right.
Because my officers ideally would not get out of the car to check for a permit for every vehicle they drive by. They drive down the street, and the hang tag's hanging where they can see it. That's why the stickers in the back were ideal because they could go down the street pretty quickly and see them. Hang tags, not quite as ideal, but we can work with that, and we're flexible. But I need it to be uniform. And I need it to be someplace the officer can see it from their vehicle.
Well, we're talking about this transition year right now, just getting this through, especially till we get the good readers. And it doesn't sound like it's that far away.
If my officer doesn't see the hang tag, they're going to stop and get out of the car. More than likely, they will see it on the dash, and you will not get a ticket. However, for productivity, for a workplace, it is slightly problematic. But we are willing to work with everyone on this.
How many permits do we actually have?
We've sold about 2,300 so far.
You know, when they did the 73 and they shut the toll booths, they gave a grace period of three months because they had a lot of problems. It sounds like just exactly the problems your constituents are having.
They didn't forgive it, though, did they? They just billed you for it.
They didn't charge them.
They still billed you for it, and then you had the opportunity to go in and to call in and change the process.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I just want you to know that they didn't, they didn't get ticketed for three months. That's all I'm saying. And we don't have the right equipment yet. I know hanging on the windows is nice, but always right. I mean, I messed up at City Hall one time that way. You forget to put it up sometimes. And if you get, I don't live down here where I have to put it up, take it down, put it up, take it down. That would be a real nuisance and really expose you to probability of getting a ticket.
Yeah. And it's frustrating. It raises the level of the frustration till the point of what we saw this evening. And then...
That's exactly what happened on the 73. You don't think all those people were frustrated?
Yeah, they were frustrated. They're still frustrated on the 73. They're still angry about it.
Not as bad.
All right. Anybody else? All right. Well, we're going to receive and file a report. We really appreciate all the work that you're doing, and I look forward to our outreach in the community on the uniforming of the signage.
Great.
Thank you very much. All right. I think that we have no new business tonight. And so, we will adjourn tonight. Now, we are also going to, due to a lack of business items, and also to take a little break, we're not going to be meeting on August the 24th, and we are hereby canceling that. And we are adjourning to September the 14th at 5:30 p.m. to meet in closed session if deemed necessary. I thank you all for coming, and I wish you a very good rest of the summer, and we'll see you in September.